Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the roll call. Gladstone?
Here.
Mullay?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Valente?
Here.
Tuthill?
Here.
Axtell?
Here.
Taggart?
Here.
Marshfield?
Here.
Vernal?
Here.
Isel?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Davis?
Those darn cookies.
Hinckley?
Here.
Kozier?
Here.
Layton?
Here.
Seta?
Here.
Please join me in the invocation by Mr. Marshfield and the pledge to the flag, Mr. Tuthill.
Dear Lord, we gather here today as colleagues, friends, department heads, and employees, all with a common goal. That goal is the continued service to the 45,000 citizens of this great county. We're in working and living in challenging times. We seek the patience of each other as we strive to work together and that we have the stamina to make a difference in our towns, our county, our state, and our nation. We pray for the people that protect us, whether in our armed forces, our emergency services, our law enforcement. We thank them for the defense of our liberties, the preservation of our union, and for maintaining law and order. We ask that these ever-so-important people in our lives are protected from outward dangers. As we go on from this day on different paths, to different lives and experiences and different destinies, may our gratitude unite us in the desire of using all that we are and all that we have for the common good of the people and our businesses. We give you thanks for our businesses, the lifeline of our county. Please be with them in these trying times. Help them to prosper and to survive for better days. Take us safely from this place to our respective homes and keep us always in thy protective care. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge is...
My pledge is to reflect on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes. I need approval of the minutes. Were there any additions or corrections for the public hearing, both of them for November 23rd? If not, those public hearing minutes will stand as submitted. The regular board meeting on November 23rd, were there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, those will stand as submitted. Communications. All communications have been referred to the appropriate committees. There's no privilege of the floor this afternoon. Are there any standing committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution number 184.
Bring that up for adoption.
2021 Budget Amendment, Acceptance of Tier Grant, Board of Elections.
Oh, wait a minute.
That's all right.
What resolution are we on?
184. 184.
Thank you. So just to comment, it's self-explanatory, but every time the State Board of Elections requires upgrades of software, the Board of Elections has been real good in getting grants to offset some of those costs, so I thank them very much.
Yeah, 184 is...
My 184 is different than...
That's the same.
I have Board of Elections.
I have Board of Elections, too.
There's only one not prefiled.
There are two.
Oh, there... Must be I don't have that. Oh, no.
Well, whatever.
What's done is done.
Apologize for the error in advance. This has never happened before. We just grabbed the wrong file when it was emailed.
What was Jim? Was it 183?
What happened was, some of the... Every supervisor gets it emailed to them. So when you got it emailed, the email that we grabbed was apparently the wrong file because the Board of Elections' resolution was late, but we tried to squeeze it in.
I wondered why it was on top.
Yeah, so we did get it in, and then...
What was his number?
His number, we're going to do it as a not prefiled.
184.
Okay?
Okay.
So what's happened is, is that when the supervisors came in and asked for a copy, we gave them the copy off of the current file. So that's why there was a mix-up, and I apologize for that. Okay, so we'll have a do-over. We'll start with resolution number 184.
I'll bring that up.
Authorization to purchase a modular structure to service a location for visitation and parental education programs, Department of Social Services. Are there any questions on this?
Where's this going?
It's about across from Mark's shop. What is it, 166 Main or something like that? Across from Napa, over in that area, next to Wonder Man.
Couple lots up from the new office building. Do we have a purchase price?
Any other questions for Mr. Marshfield? Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Resolution number 185.
Pull that up for adoption.
One second.
2021 Budget Amendment, Establishing a Capital Project for the Visitation Center, Department of Social Services.
Any question on that? I mean, I can explain it if you need explanation. I just wanted you to note that there's a 20% contingency in there, so there's a little over 100,000 that's in there in case we run into some kind of issue, and if not, it goes back into the general fund. Originally, we made a resolution that was later pulled on this board to purchase a house on Meredith Street. And that particular property ended up with too many negative issues. And so this is the route we would like to go now, and at least we got... Our code enforcement officer wasn't real thrilled about the Meredith Street one, but he's very pleased with this one, so...
And the other side of this, too, is the Visitation Center, which, right now, we have the mobile visitation center.
The CAC.
No, Jeff, no, that's not right. This has nothing to do with the Child Advocacy Center, the mobile unit. It's a visitation center to get the foster parents and the children together to hopefully bring the foster children back into the family atmosphere. There's going to be two... It's a duplex. There's going to be two different visitation centers in the house. And there's also a third entrance for a, what do they call it, a clinical... Clinician's office to meet privately with the clients. So there's going to be three entrances to it with three handicap ramps, and it's for parental education programs also. Okay?
So it has nothing to do with the...
Nothing to do with the Child Advocacy Center. That's going to be another...
Are there any other questions for Mr. Marshfield? Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
No.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yeah.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott? Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Resolution number 186.
I'll pull that up for adoption.
One second.
2021 Budget Amendment, Appropriation of American Rescue Plan Funding.
Okay, this is funding that has been approved by the ARP Committee, and we're doing a resolution to appropriate the funds. And $12,000 for the contractor that we have for our accountant, for our consultant. Throughout, we figured maybe 2,000 of that's already been spent for the, what do you call it, crystal...
The loss revenue calculation.
Yeah, loss revenue calculation. So there's another 10 in there for miscellaneous consultation. Again, if we don't use it, it'll be put back into the program. Economic Development has a project that was approved for 350,000 training program. Treasurer has a program in there for 199,650 for tax collection. And IT has different things in a projected contract for $2.6 million. Phone system and upgrades for this and that. And if you'd like a further explanation, I'd be glad to do it in January. And the most recent one we did was the emergency services for 50,000 for a drone and camera. That's what we have. About, what is it, about 3.1 or 3.2 million there of the 8.5. Well, then there's the premium pay, that was 300,000. That's funded through another resolution. So about 3.5 million has been allocated out of the 8.5.
Did you allocate funds for EMS or ambulance service?
Not yet. We're talking.
I'd just like to add that that 2.6 million is for a real overhaul of our IT system and updates for IT, which you can tell we badly need.
Yes, very good. Thank you very much. Very nice appropriation.
Mr. Ellis?
The drone is in addition to the drones that we already have?
Any other questions?
This drone is for public safety, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's also to... We need additional licensed pilots for that, too, so, which is important.
Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yeah.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Resolution number 187.
Bring this up for adoption. Second.
Authorization of four-day work week, Department of Public Works.
This is every year, right?
Correct. Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 188.
I bring this up and move for its adoption.
Designation of Delaware County Department of Economic Development as Tourism Promotion Agency for Delaware County for 2022, Department of Economic Development.
We're hoping for a smooth transition. Economic Development is as ready as it's going to be. We've had a lot of meetings, got a lot of details worked out. Let's hope for a smooth transition, that's it.
Mr. Gladstone?
I'd like to say something regarding this. First of all, I'd like to apologize to everyone for missing last month's meeting because I had a post-op doctor's appointment. At the last meeting, resolution number 178 failed, in my opinion, somewhat because of personalities and politics. With all due respect to each and every one of my colleagues in this room, I do not agree with this decision to strip the Delaware County Chamber of Commerce of its management of the tourism promotional contract, as I am aware the audit had no negative findings that I have seen at this time. If there has been issues, I feel the board has not received enough information to make a responsible decision on this matter. I suggest today we rescind today's resolution number 188, as I have nothing against... Personally, nothing against anybody at the EcoDev Department, nothing absolutely at all. But we need to gather more information and to have a plan to move forward, which is then presented to the board as a whole for a discussion. I feel it is our responsibility to rebuild this partnership with the Chamber, who have dedicated 60 years of service to commerce in Delaware County. If the board doesn't trust the Chamber, what kind of a message have we sent to the business community of this county? And to say relationships are beyond repair is the most unfortunate statement I have heard. An example of building a partnership back is Chair of the Watershed Ag Council. I know how devastating that can be. A year ago, DEP and WAC were about as far apart as we could ever be. To this day, we've made it a focus on both organizations to rebuild that partnership. We have done that because both parties agreed to work together. Visitor spending in the county for 2020 was $101 million, reported by the New York State Division of Tourism. Sales tax revenue is up to approximately $22 million for the first three quarters. 21 up approximately 25 percent. The Chamber can't take all the credit, but they have certainly played a role, important role, in achieving some of these goals. Because of these concerns, I will not be supporting resolution number 188.
Anyone else? Okay, I feel I have to respond because I've spent a lot of time on this. Obviously, I've attended all the committee meetings for economic development. I chose last meeting not to get in the gutter and mudsling publicly, and that is exactly what Mr. Pucci has done in the last few weeks. Part of the decision that voting no on continuing our relationship with the Chamber of Commerce is because there was confusion, I think, that was meant to be to our committee for a long time. One of the biggest omissions that we found out during the audit was out of the $95,000 that the county was giving the Chamber of Commerce for the Tourism Promotion Agency, in fact, they were taking 49% of that, almost $50,000, and putting it into their general account impartial to pay for salaries. Yes, it is legal, and it is also a common practice to take a small portion out of grant funding for administration of grants, but this is 49%, almost $50,000 that went into their account that had nothing to do with tourism. The second thing I would like to bring out is the Chamber of Commerce did not do the tourism promotion contract. They contracted it out. Monthly, that contractor, Blue Spark, who did do the tourism promotion, provided Mr. Pucci with an extremely detailed report that not once did he provide to the Oversight Committee. On numerous occasions, I believe, I've heard from our elected state and federal politicians that Mr. Pucci has used that position to disparage the Delaware County Board of Supervisors. Whether you believe it or not, the latest he shared with an assemblyman in the month of October was that the county holds illegal county board meetings. If any of you, all 18 of you, if you have any qualms or any reservations that we're holding illegal board meetings, nobody's come to me. I am positive that when we hold these meetings, we are legal and do it to the letter of the law. I'm sure you'll read in The Reporter, The Daily Star, this is Ray Pucci's style, to have people that I've never even heard of write letters to the editor, once again disparaging the Board of Supervisors. That is why this board voted to sever those ties, not because of political reasons. Does anybody else want to make a comment?
I do.
Okay?
I think it's very unfortunate that the war between this board and the Chamber, there's 200, 300 businesses caught in the middle of it that are members of the Chamber. I don't know what's going to happen to them now. You're certainly not going to have a full-time Chamber person. I don't know what's going to happen.
How can you say that? Do you know? Did you ask anybody?
About?
About having a full-time person?
I just talked to Economic Development.
Okay, okay.
That's where I got it.
Well, you said last meeting, Mr. Marshfield, that Glenn Neelis supported the Chamber.
Yes.
If you had asked me, we have committee meetings every month. He did not support him, nor did the committee, except for Mr. Valente.
IDA supported.
Of course, but our county agency did not.
So the unfortunate thing is, we got 200, 300 businesses caught in this...
And I think our Delaware County Economic Development Agency is professional and qualified to take that over, and we will see next year.
I had a talk with Glenn.
Did you?
Yeah.
You said you did before your vote of no.
Yeah.
Did he tell you he supported the Chamber? No, he did not.
He indicated to me that... Yeah.
Okay, that's why I didn't want to get in the mud.
Yeah.
This is what that individual caused.
Well, you got businesses caught in the mud.
Okay, well, wait and see. Does anybody else have anything?
I just... I would like to... I've sat on the Tourism Advisory Board since it began, and one of our battles every year with our grants was trying to get feedback from Mr. Pucci on how the money was spent, and we never got detailed accounts on anything. It was always spent 5,000 here, we spent 10,000 there, but it was never specific. Every other grantee had to give an extremely detailed accounting of how their money was spent. The Chamber under Mr. Pucci never did that.
And that is why we had to spend, what was it, $7,000 in an audit of taxpayer money to get him to provide us with the information. And when it was asked in committee, why we didn't know until the audit that he was taking 49% of that grant, his answer was, "I forgot." Not acceptable.
Ellen, I would just like to point out that there were contractual obligations that Mr. Pucci and the Chamber did not live up to, such as providing the records when asked, such as providing budgets that showed a breakdown that he... that the Chamber and himself were getting paid 49% of the grant they were given to administer the tourism in this county. He was asked, he refused. It was in the contract, and he still did not live up to those obligations.
Madam Chair, can you make the clarification on this audit? I understood it was not a forensic audit where they looked at every detail. It was more of a process audit that typically happens to just make sure their accounting principles are correct?
I will let Dennis answer that.
Ms. Valente?
I would say, I mean, there is... You do reveal where the money is, but it was one-year snapshot, and really was just that, a routine audit, I kept calling it.
Routine audit, so it wasn't a forensic audit?
No.
So they didn't look at the details of the receipts or expenses?
To some extent, but that was not the primary objective.
Right.
It's how the money flows, is it tracked, is it accountable, can you show us where it is? And we got most of that.
Right.
There were some balances earlier that we need to straighten out because as the transition goes on, we need to transfer funds from incomplete projects, stuff that's been encumbered, that was to roll into next year, needs to come back to the county for the same purpose. So, but, and so far, their accounting practices were clean, but then there are some specific questions that people feel they don't have enough detail on.
Which a forensic audit would have brought out, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes, so I think that's...
We didn't have really any evidence of a crime. We just weren't happy with information flow. And it was a little bit too difficult, a little more forthcoming. There was a lot to brag about. Blue Spark had a lot to brag about. Very nice jobs. It's a shame that we didn't see all of that. And it's the kind of reports that we needed to see, not so much demographics and pie charts and things that, yeah, the previous administration was fond of. We really wanted to see, how much time did you put in on this project? How do you log your hours? How do you account for that? It's all there. So, you know, so far, everything's all there. I still don't have any criminality. It may be misinterpretation of how that money... I bet you Gray's going to say, "Well, hey, we're working on tourism projects," but I'd like to see the way Lisa did. There it is. Here's your log. Here's your phone log. Here's your daily log. "I spent six hours with this conference. I spent two hours on the phone with New York State." Yeah, that kind of detail.
Well, can I just speak to that? In the contract, there was a requirement that the Chamber provide a budget to the committee, and it's my understanding that those budgets were not given.
The 95... Two funding streams. The Tourism Promotion Board, we did... Glenn and I, over the last few years, did get him to, before we would release the bed tax money, that's the bed tax money, he had to give us a breakout, and he has. And there were things like the Film Commission in there and Public Relations Company, and we went over that in detail. $95,000, not so much so.
Right, and that's what the contract was for, was for the $95,000, and there was to be a budget provided. This board never had the opportunity to approve or disapprove that $3,900 a month in administrative costs. No contractor that contracts with the county is allowed to set their own salary and their own costs without it being approved by this board, and that is what happened. They were taking 49% of the money this board approved for them and allowing it to... and putting it into their administrative costs.
Paying so.
Right, and at no time did this board approve that. The committee didn't approve it, the board didn't approve it, and again, there is no contractor that works that way with the county. And it's my understanding, and I'd like to say that this is, will be done here today, but it's my understanding that there are going to be issues going forward with getting what is rightfully the counties from the Chamber.
We'll meet with you in a couple of hours.
Yes, we will. And so I'd like to say that it's done, but.
The only I can tell you is that the economic development, even though I didn't support the resolution, we were ready, we are ready, we put a lot of time in, we had some very productive meetings. The Tourism Promotion Agency Advisory Board, very good, very good, another group of volunteers that helped on some heroes in this county. Very nice job, and we're on to it. Glenn is ready to pick it up. We'll talk a little later on about giving him extra responsibilities, and we've got to take care of him. Right now, we're not looking to hire anyone new. We're really trying to carry on, continue what the Chamber was doing. And we had a very good couple of meetings with Lisa Wisely at Blue Spark, very forthcoming. Asked for records, hour or two later, boom.
A very detailed.
They were always there.
That we never got.
They were always there, which is a shame, because there's a professional that has every reason to be proud of her work, and it's kind of concealed.
I'm sure there are board members here that didn't even know that the Chamber didn't do it, that it was Blue Spark that was actually doing the tourism promotion.
Yeah, the website, very much so, the printed material, yes. There's some collaboration, it wasn't entirely, but yeah, the bulk of the responsibilities went to a particular contractor, which I'm hoping this county, I think the Tourism Advisory Board's staying with for continuity.
I certainly feel much more confident than I did last year.
Yes.
Of that.
Yes.
Because now we've seen some information.
And it should go, all those reports should go out to the board. They're so laden with information and such, they're too big a file to send email. I don't know if this is what these people do, the gal in the corner over here, that you could aim it towards a particular place where it is. You find it very interesting. I was very pleased to see this. What Glenn and I are going to endeavor, there might be rocky roads ahead, we'll discuss that, but to make it a seamless transition, because what's more important than anything else is that we continue promoting tourism. We have an opportunity here we don't want to miss out on. This has come around, it's our turn. Delaware County's been discovered, and for very good, we've been all the demographics of what that, I spoke to someone today that moved up permanently, and he loves it. Sold his place on Long Island, retired, and he wanted to get out. This is the place, if you want to get away, Delaware County's your home, and I'd like to keep that going.
I agree. I would like, just for clarification, for those supervisors that don't know, you know we run this county, we oversee this county by committees, and of a five-member committee, there was only one supervisor that was in favor of even bringing the contract resolution to the Board of Supervisors to vote. And the reason I asked that that committee moved that was because I was afraid that if we, because the committee was not in favor of the Chamber, other than Dennis Valente, of appointing the Chamber as next year's TPA, I asked that they do that because I was afraid that Mr. Pucci would go to the newspapers and say, "Oh, that was Tina Mole, or that was so-and-so killing it in committee," and not having the Board of Supervisors vote on it. I guarantee that that would have been the defense, that had it gone to the Board of Supervisors, it would have been approved. That is why the committee did not support the TPA, with the exception of Dennis Valente, and neither did the Economic Development Director. That is why, not because so-and-so ran against so-and-so, that's your right, had nothing in my mind to do with that. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I think the economic development will do a fine job in running this program for us. I think they'll be far more effective and obviously more cost-effective and efficient than we've had in the past. I sit on that committee, and it upset me when I found out that he was taking $3,900 a month for administration, that was, that's a grant, and he's been doing this probably for years. We couldn't get that information, we were in the dark, and it took an audit for us to find this out. That shouldn't be, that's not the way government works, so I will support this resolution today in favor of economic development being designated.
Okay, resolution number 188. It's a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Bud and Wayne. Okay, resolution number 189.
I bring this up and move towards adoption.
Levy of taxes for special districts, highways, and general outside of village. And there is a change on the resolution that I've noted, and it will be corrected. Any questions about this resolution? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yeah.
Mole? Yes. Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Laiton?
Yes.
Seta.
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 190.
I bring this one up and move towards adoption.
Second.
Levy of county tax extension of roll warrants for same. Questions?
How'd it go this year? Were people on time, close to it? Were your budgets coming in?
They were great. There weren't any problems.
It seemed like it was going better this year. Somehow you put the fear of God in people running this.
Oh, I did. That'll be the headline tomorrow. Yeah. Thanks a lot, Dennis.
You shouldn't be. That's fear. Let them see who are. Thank you, thank you very much. You're always a very nice guy.
Thank you. After you say that, huh? Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. Resolution number 191.
I bring up resolution 191 and move towards adoption.
Second.
Authorizing the clerk of the Board of Supervisors to cause to be printed a summary of the abstract of the town budgets. Questions? It's a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. Resolution number 192.
I'll bring it up and move towards adoption. Second.
Calling organizational meeting. So the organizational meeting will be on Wednesday, January 5th, 2022, at 1:00 p.m. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. Resolution number 193.
I'll bring it up and move towards adoption. Second.
2022 Board of Supervisors meeting schedule.
Exactly the same as last, just passed here.
Any questions or comments about this schedule? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. We have two not prefiled resolutions. I'll waive rule 10.
Three.
Three. Okay, we have three. I'll waive rule 10 without objection and move on to resolution number 194.
I'll bring that up again and move.
2021 Budget Amendment, Acceptance of Tier Grant Board of Elections. Rub it in, Jim. Please call the roll.
Just relax, I'm sorry.
Gladstone?
Yeah.
Mole? Yes. Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Laiton?
Yes.
Seta.
Yes.
I heard you. Okay, resolution number 195.
I bring this up and move towards adoption.
Leveling of 2021 to 2022 Return School Taxes Treasurers Office. Please call the roll.
The comment I have is that's why we need funds in our, we need $7 million just to pay for unpaid school tax.
And they're general fund.
Pardon?
And they're general fund.
And that keeps the town whole.
Just higher than last year. No?
No.
Is this, any significant change in this number? Is it up and down?
I was comparing last year.
Bev's right up. No, she doesn't know. She doesn't know.
So nothing jumped out?
No, nothing.
Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole? Yes. Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Laiton?
Yes.
Seta.
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 196.
I bring this up and move towards adoption. Pay the bills.
Payment of audit. Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole? Yes. Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Laiton?
Yes.
Seta.
Yes.
At this time, I would like to formally introduce Eric Wilson. If you could stand up, Eric. He has been elected as the Sidney Town Supervisor. So welcome.
I look forward to working well and meeting each and one. It'll take me a few weeks to get all the names remembered.
We'll help you through it. I do, Mr. Wilson, this isn't usually how our board meetings go, so. Mr. Taggart?
There was a question on how the school, unpaid school taxes compared to last year. I would like to know that figure too, if you can find it out.
I can tell.
Just to be honest.
Okay, Chris is going to go get the numbers. So we just want to wait just a minute. In the meantime, I'd also like to thank Bev Shields for the delicious cookies that everybody's enjoyed.
Where is she?
She wasn't. You notice we didn't bring them to the meeting? Yeah, they do. Yeah, what doesn't? Okay, Krista has the numbers. Last year, the tax was $6,777,986.38 in comparison to the $6,623,353.60. Right.
No, it's up.
It's up?
It's up. It's up about, right.
It's $6.6 million. Is this year, the $6 million was last year.
Six hundred thousand.
Okay, did everybody hear that? It's up about $600,000 over last year.
Thank you very much.
Okay, two announcement. Jim, Ellis, do you have something? There will be a human resources meeting immediate following the Republican Caucus that will be held in this room. And, Mr. Wilson, we welcome you to join us. Okay, does anybody else have any business? Have a wonderful Merry Christmas.